Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 7:00 PM on June 13th, 2022. And this, we will begin the meeting of the Wayne Westland Board of Education. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We're going to begin our meeting this evening with a pledge of allegiance to the flag, led by Brady Brinkett, Riley Kitzinger, Liliana McDaniel, Nyla Swingrum from Wildwood Elementary School. Kids, please come on up. Kids, come on up. Come on up here for just a moment.
All right, so we have Brady Brinkett. My name is Brady Brinkett, and I am one, I'm sorry, and I'm 10 years old. I just finished fifth grade in Ms. Cabello's class. In my free time, I draw, I bowl, play video games, and read graphic novels. My favorite subject is science, and I love learning about outer space. And next, we have Riley Kentonzer. I'm a fifth grader in Mr. Karnkey's class at Wildwood Elementary. My favorite subject is science. I like playing VR games, and I like birds. And we have Ms. Liliana McDaniel. My name is Liliana McDaniel, and I am 11 years old. I like to draw anime and realistic art. I have a pet cat named Emmy. My favorite color is gray. I love to eat fried fish and sushi. My favorite subjects are math and social studies. My family means a lot to me, and I love them very much. When I grow up, I would like to be an amazing artist. And we have Nyla Swingrum. I am Nyla, and I am identical twin. Leila is slightly older than me. I have a younger sister named Hannah. I love to play outside and ride bikes with my sisters. My favorite subjects are art and science. I played basketball for the Wildwood girls' team this year, and I want to keep playing through college. I love playing Roblox with my friends.
Working? Brady? I'm going to hand these out to you, and then I'm going to read one. Nyla, let me read yours. It says, "Award of recognition presented to Nyla Swingrum for participation in the flag ceremony during a regular meeting of the Board of Education of Wayne Westland Community Schools, June 13th, 2022." Thank you very much. So, did you bring anybody with you tonight?
Yeah, I brought my mom, my grandma, and my grandpa.
Hi, everyone.
I brought my mom and my two sisters.
What are their names?
Hannah and Leila.
I brought my mom, my dad, and my grandma.
I brought my mom.
Thank you very much. You're going to get a picture of them? Stand right there, we're going to get a picture. Show your awards so everyone can see it.
Hold them up for me, for the audience.
Brady, don't cover your face.
Yeah, lower down, give us a big smile, okay? Three, two. Oh, my turn to be around. Help it to camera work. There we go. I know what I'm doing, it rounds.
Now, thank you, kids. We know you don't have any homework. So, you don't have to go, but you can if you want. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks again, guys.
Ms. Hines, roll call, please.
All right. Dr. Weaver is absent. We have Mr. Albert.
Present.
Ms. May.
Present.
Mr. Buckle.
Here.
Mr. Neal.
Here.
Ms. Hines here, and President Cox.
And I am here. Let the record reflect, Mr. Weaver's absence is excused as he is attending a family member's graduation ceremony. 259.22, recognitions and presentations. Dr. Dignan, please.
Thanks, President Cox. Good evening, members of the board and community. We're lucky, Mr. Scott Little's here to present award, the Meridian Award. He's going to say a few words as they're making their way up to the podium. I just want to thank our operations department for all the hard work. And if I'm, Tony can correct me, but this is the seventh year in a row. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Little, who's going to present the award.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I am Scott Little, I'm the Associate Executive Director of Michigan School Business Officials, MSBO. And we're about a 2,000-person association, made up primarily of finance folks, facilities, transportation, and food service. So, we created this award called the Meridian Award a number of years ago to recognize districts and areas for successful school operations, programs, and plans. And it's my privilege to be here tonight to award, as we just mentioned, the seventh time that Wayne Westland Operations Department has won the Meridian Award. And this is a unique one, I think, in that it's a big, community-type effort, right? I mean, it was the board, it's the community, and of course, the operations department to help push it through. But, so, we have this nice award. I'll try to keep my fingerprints off of it. Those are places, you know, we don't want folks to know. So, here we go. Who wants to? We got Gino and Tony both up here to take that.
Thank you.
And there is also a check for $1,000 to the... And, you know, one of the other criteria for these awards are that they're replicable, so other districts can see them and think about doing it themselves. And I think this is a really good example of one of those. There's lots of districts out there with property and buildings that they don't know what to do with, and what a really cool solution that you guys have come up with. So, I congratulate the board, and the community, and the district, and Tony and Gino, for sure. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks again, guys.
Scott is very modest, by the way. So, I have been a member of MSBO since 1995, believe it or not. Very long time. A great organization, wonderful for folks like us that are doing the support staff items for school districts. Scott Little has been instrumental with the operations and maintenance for so many districts across the state. It's unbelievable. But I do want to say thank you to the board, and thank you for Dr. Dignan, for allowing us to be able to do what we did with the Madison and Kettering property. The award tonight was based on developing that property, turning homes into it, and partnering with Lombardo Builders and our Career Tech Center to do that in the city of Westland. So, thank you very much, and we are very proud to have number seven. We actually put a showcase up in our office for him. But thank you. Thank you very much.
Just hoping we'd hear from you, Gina. Hey, congratulations again, guys. And Tony, this is the second big award you've won in the last couple of weeks. He was the distinguished alumni at Wayne Memorial this year, so congratulations. Next up, we're going to have a presentation on the K-12 Sex Education Committee. They've met the last couple of months. I'm going to ask Ms. Pearl, Ms. Nathan, to come up. Again, I credit them. It seemed like they were having Zooms every day for a while there. So, I'm going to turn it over, and they're going to go over the K-12 sex education.
All right. Good evening, board and community. So, back in February, Dr. Tara Shammy shared that we would be moving forward with convening the sex ed advisory board. And so, we wanted to provide an update to the board and the community tonight. So, as we shared at that meeting, school districts are required to teach about dangerous communicable diseases, including HIV and AIDS, and also can choose to teach sex education, which we do in Wayne Westland. Sex education is the only content area regulated by the laws of the state of Michigan. So, when I'm coming up here other times with ELA and science and other content, this is very unique to this instruction. And materials and resources must go through rigorous selection process and officially be approved by the Board of Education. And so, that is why we are here tonight. The goal of the Sex Education Advisory Board is to make a recommendation to the Board of Education for materials that support sex education instruction. And the members on our board had to include parents of Wayne Westland students, educators, medical professionals, clergy, and students. And all but the students, we got their input in other ways. We had them in all of our meetings, and they were included, all of those members. My fourth grade and seventh grade sons got to be students that got to provide input, as did the students and the children of the members of our team as well. So, we had a unique way of getting their input. So, Wayne Westland developed a K-12 sex ed advisory board. And then, because we had such a large interest, we split them into two. An elementary advisory board, and then into a secondary advisory board. So, I led the elementary work, and then Adrienne Nathan led the secondary work. The process that we have to follow per the guidelines of MDE is to first have a sex ed advisory board, which is what we did, and have all of the materials shared with the board. And so, you receive those in separate cover from both of us in the last couple of weeks. Then, we have to make a recommendation to the board, which is why we are here tonight. After that, we will have two public hearings, and you'll get the dates of those. Those will be in June and July. Then, we'll review the public comments and revise our proposal if needed. Then, we intend to come back in August for the final approval. So, the criteria that we use per MDE is that it's, the materials are age-appropriate and medically accurate. And then, per Wayne Westland, we wanted to make sure that they were aligned to the national standards, and there was consistent messaging and instruction. We also asked for feedback from our teams to see if there were other criteria that they wanted to make sure that we used as we were reviewing materials. And there were no further criteria that was suggested. All right, so now I'm going to get into the elementary materials. So, the elementary materials were based on things that were from the puberty workshop and curriculum. And this is what was recommended to us as the best tool for elementary level through RISA. We reviewed every single component of these materials, which is why we met over and over and over again. There were videos, multiple student activities that could be used with each video, and then also some take-home components, fact sheets that could be used. So, I will share with you the ones that we settled on. So, as I mentioned, you have all of these videos and the components that we chose. But we ended up, after we reviewed everything, that the team determined that each of the five videos, and they're listed there in the content, were all of value and all recommended. So, from there, we reviewed any of the student activities that align with them. And for each of the lessons or videos, we then chose an activity that the students can do during the video. We chose a small group activity that they can do after. And then, there's also a take-home optional activity that students can do as well at home with what they call a trusted adult. Some of the other considerations for the elementary level is that it would be, we determined that fifth grade is the grade level that we are recommending. We are recommending that all five of the lessons will be taught separately between the boys and the girls. We also determined to have the PE and/or the life skills teachers as the instructors, because there's less of them. So, we have 10 elementary schools, about three fifth-grade teachers in every school. So, that would be 30 teachers to have trained and to make sure that there is consistent messaging, where we have fewer PE and life skills teachers. And I actually even met with both teams last week. We may end up having one PE teacher, one life skills teacher, kind of going on a roadshow, and just having those two people be the instructors for this. So, we're still working out those details, and those are the details that we get to work out as the educators. But these are the things that we're considering. Also, a key piece is that we have that common message to students before they watch this video. We know that they're watching a video, we know the activities they're using. But after showing things to our kids, this is some feedback we got, specifically from my son. "Mom, you can't just show me that video, you got to prepare me." Great, noted, we will do that. So, passing along now then to Adrienne Nathan, and she will share about the secondary.
Good evening. The secondary committee went through a very similar process as the elementary one. We screened 11 secondary curriculums, and from that criteria, we checked those 11 for whether or not they met MDE, legal, and Wayne Westland requirements, were the material student-friendly, of high quality, and bias-free. And we also looked at the publishing and revision dates to make sure that they were current and up to date. Of those 11, we selected four for an in-depth review. The four were The Wonder Years, Michigan Model for Health, Unhushed, and Health Smart. Which one? Which button? Thank you. Okay. So, for middle school, for HIV and AIDS, and for sex education total, they chose Health Smart curriculum. For high school, they chose the Michigan Model for Health. And all of those, all of these are available to you and will be available made to the public during the public hearings. What's next? Next slide. Thank you. There were some additional recommendations due to the sensitive nature of secondary sex education. And one recommendation, although it's not required by law, the committee recommends that the Wayne Westland Community Schools consider entering into a guest speaker agreement with local law enforcement and school-based health professionals to reinforce the following components of the law. Local law enforcement may address students on the areas of sexual conduct, consent, and clearly inform pupils of sexual contact and individual rights. Also, licensed school health personnel may be asked to support qualified teachers in presenting medically accurate information to students. Next slide. And then, there was one additional consideration we would like to lift, and that was based off of the MI5 survey given to our students, as well as national and global trends. The committee would like to recommend that Wayne Westland schools consider using following lessons to teach students about healthy, social, and romantic relationships. And those, the one for middle high school, middle school was selected, which was Health Smart. And high school selected Michigan Model for Health Lesson 7, or Unhushed, Unit 2, Session 3. There will be two public hearings required by law. We have to have one in the daytime and one in the evening. And so, one will be in person on June 23rd, 1:00, here in this room. And then, the next one will be Tuesday, July 19th, at 5:00 PM. And we're considering a virtual hybrid model for that, where all materials, videos, can be reviewed. If you are unable, or anyone is unable to make those meetings, all of these materials are available for public view at, by request. Are there any? Oh, wait, final steps. The August board meeting, so our timeline, to restate our timeline, we will have these two public hearings. And then, August, after the public hearings, pending there's no changes or reconsiderations, we will come back to this platform and ask for the board to recommend the lessons put forth. If approved, then the materials will be purchased, and then training will be provided. Are there any questions?
Questions from the board? Thank you, Ms. Nathan.
Thank you.
Again, I just want to thank Ms. Nathan and Ms. Pearl. This has been ongoing, and they put a lot of time and energy into it. And we had over 150 people to start off, so thank you. Next, I'd like to call Mr. Vander Zee up there to talk about the pilot for the Classroom Technology Project.
Great, thank you, Dr. Dignan. And we have some teachers who participated in this process that I'd like to invite up for this overview for the board as well. This is part of the bond project. That was part of the original, originally brought to the board for report back in November of last year, you may recall. We talked about a process that we were going to go through to involve our instructional staff in making decisions about what the foundational technologies would be in our classrooms moving forward. As you may recall from that date long ago, we talked about the fact that in our classrooms, our instructional technology, our smart boards, our projectors, some of that equipment that we're using to deliver instruction to students is over 10 years old. And the average life expectancy for that is typically in the seven-year range. So, the district has done a fantastic job, a very responsible job, of extending and getting that equipment to last as long as we have. The bond process of identifying and replacing that equipment was delayed a little bit because of the whole COVID situation. But we published a strategy and a schedule back in November that you told us to go ahead and run with. And I'm happy to report we're right on schedule, perhaps a few days ahead of schedule. The culmination of that process, largely from an instructional standpoint, these teachers can talk a little bit more about. But we invited approximately 25 teachers from across the district, as some of you may recall, to participate in pilot classroom technology trials. That happened at the beginning of the school year. The staff was brought in, that group was brought in, and we had a great meeting at the Ford Center, Ford Banquet Hall Center. We talked about all of the things that the team felt were good instruction. What does good instruction look like? What does good teaching look like? We spent an entire morning, pretty much, on that topic. And then, we spent the afternoon looking at all kinds of great technology tools that different vendors had brought in to show off their wares. We then spent a few hours together trying to correlate what we had seen and what we had talked about in the morning. How do we best leverage some of the great technology tools out there in our classrooms to deliver the best possible instruction? That team put some great ideas together, put some ideas on the table that said, "I want to try these things, I think this is what I can do with it." The district approved that we could go ahead and purchase those on a trial basis. They got deployed in most of the classrooms. We did have a couple of classrooms that, because of supply chain issues, didn't get their equipment when we wanted them to. But we stayed on schedule, brought that group back together again about a week and a half ago. And at that time, talked about what worked, what didn't work. The team spent a lot of energy and effort debating and going through a process that we had put together to identify what would be the best possible foundational technology tools we could put in our classrooms to build upon for different program areas and subject areas and grade levels, but what would be the best possible foundational tools to put in place with the bond dollars that we have. I'm happy to report that the team reached consensus on that. And generally speaking, they've recommended that we proceed with an interactive display in each and every classroom that has a built-in computer so that it can operate independently of the laptops that they have and deliver instruction whether their laptop is there or not. Connection to the audio system that we already have in the classroom is part of the safety and security system. And then, new document cameras as part of that, and several supporting components. Layout will vary a little bit by classroom, because some classrooms have special circumstances in terms of what would be the best possible place to put it in the classroom. We'll be working with building administrators and the teaching staff to identify some of those things moving forward. The overall budget is between $4.5 and $5.5 million for this process. That will equip all, approximately 750 instructional spaces in the district with that foundational set of tools that the instructional staff has determined are really the best fit for us. So, with that, I will invite the team to make any comments about the process, what their experience was, and be able to just share some of that with the board.
All right. My name is Chris King. I'm the sixth-grade accelerated teacher over at Adams', and I was grateful to be part of this process. It was pleasant. It did take a while to get the technology, but, you know, we can do what we can do with the supply chain issues. But we were all able to try out different things, report on them. And, you know, I could talk all about that stuff. But the gist of it is, I'm very grateful that the district has taken the steps to, just like was mentioned, to be flexible with the implementation of this. So, we all know that we have different styles of classrooms or different layouts, and it's great to not go in with a, put the smart board in one-spot approach, where it ends up not getting used, or the flat panel in this case. But especially speaking as a former specials teacher, I appreciate that Tony has gone through and thought in advance to make sure that all of the instructional spaces are covered, not just the grade-level classrooms. So, the specials, the electives, that we're planning to roll this out to everybody. So, it's a nice, I'd like to say, weight off all of our shoulders to know that that was covered. So, thank you for your time.
My name is Sandy Wade. I teach fifth grade at Hamilton Elementary. And I was lucky, and I picked exactly what you guys want, which is the Perimethium board, or the smart board interactive, and the document camera. So, I was able to experience both of those in the classroom. And the kids were, A, very excited because they could see it very clearly. It runs by HDMI cord. And the clarity of it versus what I had, which is a projector and a smart board, was phenomenal. You could see it from any angle in the classroom. My whole wall is windows, so I had to, like, turn off the lights and close the blinds in order for the kids to see the outdated technology that we had in the classroom. And now, my windows can be, the blinds can be open, and they still see it with no problem at all. The sound of it is wonderful, even though I know it's going to connect through the systems and everything. And the same thing with the document camera. It's smaller, and the clarity of it is really clear to the kids. There's also a video option on the document camera, where the teacher could videotape what she was doing, and then play it over and over again, or post it on something if she needed, or he or she needed to do that. But like I said, I liked the opportunity. I was around when they did the first smart board installation and everything. And to see this new stuff is really, would be great for the classroom and that. So, hey, thanks for the opportunity to be in the pilot program and to play with new technology.
Good evening. My name is John Ross. I'm a math teacher at Wayne Memorial High School. The only thing I want to add is express my gratitude for allowing teachers to be involved and invited into this process. It's always wonderful when we in the classroom have an opportunity to have input on the things that are going to affect our working conditions. So, thank you for involving us.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Carlson, fifth-grade teacher at Stevenson. And just from a staff point of view, a lot of the teachers came into my room to see the smart board that I had, and they were so excited. And I think that they felt really good about having the staff, all of us, in the process. And they felt part of the process, too. They came in, they used the board. So, they'll be really excited to get it.
I would like, on behalf of Seth and I, Mr. Wenzel, we'd like to thank the staff, the folks that did the pilot and came to the meetings. There were some tough discussions at those meetings. Great people. And we were totally hands-off. Seth and I were, we stepped back, we're not buying anything, we want them to buy it. And we applaud you. Thank you very much.
So, just a quick review again. The last parts of our schedule, we're right on track with, is we're in the throes right now of writing specification documents to go out for bids for all of these technologies the staff has identified as the recommended and prescribed technologies for our classrooms. That will be going out very soon. We're hoping to come back to you on or slightly before the date that we had originally published with, which was the August meeting, with a recommendation to proceed with installing those products this fall in the classrooms and to roll through the classrooms moving forward. So, certainly, if the board has any questions...
Questions from the board?
No.
Yeah, one question, I'm sorry.
Ms. Hines?
If I did a tour, I went to the American International Academy. They had some of that Savoyard-type classroom furniture. They had, like, these stand-up desks, and some of the kids can stand up, and like, different type of furniture, like, you know, some of the kids might have ADD, can bounce around. Are you guys considering some of that furniture as well, or a different?
Unfortunately, in this current bond issue, we do not have classroom furniture. In our next assessment for our next bond issue, we will.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Buckle?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. Some years ago, I somewhat naively asked a former superintendent, "What's the life expectancy of a school building?" And his response was, "It depends on how well it's maintained." And that's kind of what we're doing with this bond issue. We're upgrading our windows, we're upgrading our air conditioning, we're upgrading our heating, we're upgrading a number of areas, we're adding space to several of our elementaries. And so, when we come, when somebody comes to our district and looks at our building, they're going to see something really nice. But with programs like this, when our students move into those classrooms, they're going to experience a level of education that was unknown in this district ten years before. So, I thank you for all of your work in working on this pilot program. I believe that it's going to make a tremendous difference in the product that we turn out. So, thank you very much.
Other questions?
I wonder if you might just explain to the board what a student is going to see and how this is going to look to them when they walk in the classroom and how's it going to function?
Sure. So, in each classroom, there will be a large interactive display. So, by that, it's a really big television, basically, but it's interactive in that it's touch-based, so that the instructors can actually use it as a marker board. That can, that digital ink can be lifted off and stored and be able to be used in a learning management system like Google Classroom. It can be part of a lesson plan that's done in advance and then played back for students using some of the software. Students can even interact with that so that it's not just a teacher tool. At the lower grade levels, multiple students can be interacting with it simultaneously. One of the things the team told us was, and this will be featured in our classrooms in our elementary and middle schools, that those displays need to be height adjustable so that they can be raised up when teachers are presenting and when we want students to interact with the material, the content, from a learning perspective, they can be lowered down so students can actually be using it. So, that will be one of the primary, most visible things that we'll see in our classrooms.
How large is this display?
The minimum size that we're intending to purchase will be seventy-five-inch diagonal displays. And we'd like to go to a little bit bigger, but we'll have to see what the bids come back like. So, the team tried a lot of seventy-five-inchers. That is kind of what we settled on as the baseline. And if we can afford to do bigger, or in some classrooms where we have more square footage and students are a little further away, we may choose a combination depending on how the numbers work out.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Dignan. With that, ladies and gentlemen, we will move to two-six-zero-point-two-two, which is citizens' comments on agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for people who wish to address the board on items which appear on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to do so tonight? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to two-six-one-point-two-two, which is the consent agenda. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Albrecht? Support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Hines? Any discussion? Roll call vote, please, Ms. Hines.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. President Cox?
I vote yes.
Let the record show, motion passes, six-zero.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, two-six-two-point-two-two, is the finance committee report. Ms. May, you have the floor, and good luck.
Wow, thank you.
Big report.
Yes, I'll keep it short, though. So, the finance committee met on Thursday, June ninth, at three-thirty PM via Zoom. During our meeting, Mrs. Mittler presented information in regards to purchasing six-ten-passenger vehicles. That will be brought to the board this evening. I'm sorry, six-ten-passenger van vehicles. That will be brought to the board this evening. Sorry about that. Mr. Toko presented to the board with the assistance of Mr. Palito from HMH, Holden Mifflin, information in regards to ELA, I'm sorry, reading, Read 180 and Math 180. Those purchases will also be brought to the board this evening. Mr. Winslow, I'm sorry, Mr. Spiezak spoke with us in regards to our bond and the technology recommendations, and actually, that was Mr. Van Drizee who just presented with the staff. We also had Mr. Spiezak speak with us in regards to the underground hydronic distribution piping. That was information that he shared with us, and he will bring that to the board at a later date. Mr. Winslow shared an Apple service proposal. And Mr. Winslow also talked to us about the Z-Space learning stations. Mrs. Cleaves shared information in regards to the FSMC renewal, the sinking fund resolution, our final budget, our proposed budget for 2022, 2023, as well as a resolution for L-4029, the investment report, our monthly check register. And Mr. Toko shared closing comments on behalf of Dr. Dignan. Board members, Mr. Neal and Mr. Buckaloo, as well as myself, thanked everyone for their hard work. We had a full meeting, and so our closing comments were pretty simple, was just to say thank you, because there was a lot presented on that day. So, that is our report.
Thank you, Ms. May. Next item on our agenda, two-six-three-point-two-two, is review and approval of business service items. I hope you all set?
Yeah, I have one. First up is the final budget amendment for 2122.
Is there a motion on the final amendment for the 2122 year?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hines? Support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Neal? Is there discussion? Roll call vote on the resolution?
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show, six-zero, motion carries.
Thank you. Ms. Cleaves?
The next item is the recommendation to adopt the 2223 general fund operating budget.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Albrecht? Support by Ms. Hines? Discussion? Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. President Cox?
Yes.
Let the motion, let the record show, motion passes, six-zero.
Ms. Cleaves?
Okay, next up is the sinking fund resolution. I just want to mention our current sinking fund is set to expire at the end of this year, and so we're proposing a new sinking fund. This will include technology and security.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hines? Support?
Support.
Support by Ms. May? Discussion? Mr. Albrecht?
Renewal of the former sinking fund, new millage, lower millage?
This will actually be a new millage, one mil, and it will bring in two-point-two million every year for ten years.
Thank you.
And is it, is there a reason for new beyond the increase in amount? Are we adding anything that can be covered by sinking fund?
Well, this was to add the technology and security. Yes.
Thank you.
One more question, sorry. There was talk, was they ever thinking about adding the buses to the sinking fund or no? Transportation?
No.
No.
Okay.
Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. President Cox?
Yes.
Six-zero, motion passes.
Item four?
Okay, the next one is for our 2223 tax levy, as represented on the L-4029 form. We're looking for seventeen-point-four-seven-nine-eight mils for our operating purchases, purposes, I'm sorry, and then four-point-four-eight mils for our debt, and also zero-point-nine-six-three-five mils for our sinking fund.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Albrecht? Support? By Ms. Hines? Discussion? Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show, six-zero, motion carries.
Next up is the recommendation to renew our food service management contract. I'm requesting approval to renew the contract with Aramark for the fiscal year July one, 2022, through June thirtieth, 2023. This renewal will be pending, of course, MDE approval. The proposed increase will be a three percent to our general and administrative fees and a three percent increase to our management fee, and this will equate to an overall fee increase of approximately two thousand eight hundred thirty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. May? Support? Mr. Buckaloo? Is there discussion? Roll call vote, please, Ms. Hines?
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Motion carries, six-zero.
Ms. Cleaves?
Okay, next up is the recommendation to purchase Apple professional services. I'm requesting approval from the Board of Education. The professional services will include the integration and deployment task of the ECF grant funding iPad project. If approved, these services will be charged to grant accounts and the total will not exceed eighty thousand dollars.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
By Mr. Albrecht? Support?
Support.
By Ms. May? Discussion? Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. President Cox?
Yes.
Motion carries, six-zero.
Next up is the recommendation to purchase district vehicles. I'm requesting approval from the Board of Education to purchase six 2023 Ford Transit ten-passenger vans. If approved, the cost of the vehicles will not exceed three hundred fourteen thousand seven hundred thirty dollars and will be charged to the general fund and our career tech added cost funds.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
By Mr. Neal? Support?
Support.
By Ms. Hines? Discussion? Roll call vote, please, Ms. Hines?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show, six-zero, motion carries.
I think you're running out of stuff, Ms. Cleaves.
Last up, recommendation to purchase Read and Math 180 acceleration. I'm requesting approval from the Board of Education. If this project provides acceleration to over three thousand students and ninety teachers in grades six through nine at our three middle schools and two high schools, the cost of this program includes teacher and student materials as well as professional services. If approved, the cost of this program will not exceed five million two hundred fifty-six thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars and forty-six cents. This is over a five-year term, of which two million thirteen thousand four hundred forty-one dollars and thirty-four cents will be paid in year one, and this cost will be funded through our grant accounts.
Motion?
So moved.
By Mr. Buckaloo? Support by Mr. Albrecht? Is there discussion? Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show, six-zero, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Cleaves. Put that high credit card back into the file. Two-six-four-point-two-two, review and approval of human resource items. Mr. Kapulka?
Thank you, President Cox, members of the board, and Dr. Dignan, in an effort to keep up with the business department and Ms. Cleaves. We also have eight items to go over this evening, the first of which is the purchase service agreement with Neola. Neola provides administrative oversight services where they will review board policy and administrative guidelines. The cost is twenty-six thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. It's broken up over two installments, and it also includes the comprehensive review of structure, and then they will also do professional development to walk us through a really structured process to review our board policies and administrative guidelines.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hines? Support?
Support.
Support by Ms. May? Discussion?
Comment?
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes, I think this is an excellent idea. I don't know why we haven't gone to Neola years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show, six-zero, motion carries.
Do you have anything else on the agenda, Mike?
A couple more things. Thank you. The next is one of several contract agreements that we've reached with our bargaining units in the Wayne Westland School District, the first of which is the Wayne Westland Education, excuse me, Educators Association. It's a two-year contract, and the information, the highlights of which should be in your board packet.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
By Mr. Albrecht? Support?
Support.
By Ms. Hines? Is there discussion? Mr. Albrecht?
So refreshing. Just so nice to be able to do this.
I'd like to say, too, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt.
It's good.
Yeah, I mean, with the cost of inflation going up, I'm really happy at, you know, us being able to take care of our employees and, you know, so thank you, guys. Thank the staff, thank everybody who was really strategic in helping us out with that because I was concerned about, you know, losing so much staff, but being able to kind of keep up is really good. You guys did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Roll call vote?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show, six-zero, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kapulka.
The next tentative agreement is with the Wayne Westland Association of Early Childhood Education. This also is a two-year deal.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
By Mr. Albrecht? Support by Ms. Hines?
Support.
By Ms. May, I'm sorry. Is there discussion? We're equally thrilled. We're equally thrilled. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Hines.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show, six zero, motion carries.
Mr. Kapulka.
The next agreement is with the Wayne Westland Educational Secretaries Association. This, uh, bargaining agreement is a three-year contract.
Motion?
So moved.
Ms. Hines?
Support.
Support by Ms. May, discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, President Cox?
Yes.
Uh, let the record show, six zero, motion carries.
Uh, the next contract is with the Wayne Westland Association of Paraprofessionals. Uh, this is also a three-year contract.
Is there a motion by Mr. Albrecht, support?
Support.
Support by Ms. May, is there discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show, six zero, motion passes.
That's how we feel, too. Next item, Mr. Kapulka?
Our next contract agreement is with Local Four. Uh, this, this is also a three-year contract agreement.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
By Mr. Albrecht, support?
Support.
By Ms. May, discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, Mr. Neal?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show, six zero, motion carries.
Mr. Kapulka?
Uh, our next contract is with the Wayne Westland Building Administrators Association, uh, and this is a two-year deal.
Is there a motion? By Mr. Albrecht, support?
Support.
By Ms. Hines, is there discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yeah.
Ms. Hines, yes, President Cox?
Yes.
Six zero, motion passes.
And the final human resource item of the evening is the Wayne Westland Central Office Administrators Association contract agreement, and this is a three-year deal.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
By Mr. Buckaloo, support? By Ms. Hines, discussion? Mr. Albrecht?
Is Mr. Spiezak in this group?
He's right there.
Tell him to sell some of that war. No. Just kidding.
Any other further discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, President Cox?
Yes.
Six zero, motion passes.
Thank you.
That's it?
I yield my time, thank you.
Next item on our agenda is two six five point two two, Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, President Cox. Uh, my presentation is going to have to do with the, uh, annual superintendent's evaluation. Two years ago, this Board of Education adopted a Michigan Association of School Board tool, uh, which falls within the guidelines of the Michigan Department of Education as, as adopted and, and appropriate for this process. We did that because it aligns with the same type of evaluation tool that every administrator, teacher, and other employee in a school district would experience. It requires quarterly observations, progress monitoring by a committee, uh, which allows for course correction if needed. That committee consisted of myself, uh, Mr. Neal, and Ms. May. It required quarterly reporting to the Board of Education and the community, which we did. Considers joint board and district improvement goals. It takes into account financial reporting and obligations and applications, pays close attention to instructional leadership, progress monitoring of strategies and policies put in place, community and employee relations, governing and boarding, board relations, business and finance, and progress toward student achievement. The board met earlier tonight to complete a forman, formal summative evaluation, and our superintendent was rated highly effective with a total score of ninety-five out of a hundred possible points. Mr. President, we need a motion, uh, to approve this evaluation of Dr. Dignan, and roll call vote of the board.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
By Ms. May, support? Mr. Neal? Is there discussion?
I'd like to say something. I'd like to say I'm extremely proud of our superintendent. Um, during our discussion, we were talking about the curriculum, you know, achievement, and, you know, overcoming a COVID as a superintendent, you know, dealing with a lot, the construction. I admire my staff with the human resources. We hired a lot of people, our finance department. Um, and I was saying how impressed I was due to the rising costs of, um, you know, we're doing construction, buses, gas, you know, a lot of things, and you guys were able to maintain a great budget. I am impressed about the different programs, the twenty-five free summer programs for our children. So that will help on the back end with that loss that we had from COVID, you know, the two-year loss. So starting off, we're gonna have a strong year. So I am really proud of the board. I'm proud of the staff and the community just for sticking with us and, you know, making this possible. So Dr. Dignan, hats off to you, sir.
Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, and President Cox?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes, six zero.
Thank you. Dr. Dignan?
Two six six point two two, uh, Michigan High School.
Yeah, the Michigan High School Athletic Association Membership Resolution, uh, this is an annual fee. This allows all of our athletic teams to, uh, play in post, uh, tournament play, so.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Albrecht, support?
Support.
By Ms. May, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Hines, yes, Ms. May?
Excuse me, yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show, six zero, motion passes.
Thank you. Dr. Dignan?
Yeah, I just want to, uh, thank all the teachers, uh, that went through our, uh, technology pilot. Um, again, there's a lot of work involved, a lot of decisions, as Tony talked about earlier, sometimes those are courageous conversations, as we like to call them. I want to congratulate Tony and the Operations Department. I know Gino had to leave, but, um, the, the work that they do day in and day out and the way that they've been able to move some of our properties has been phenomenal, so I'm gonna tip my hat to you, Tony. Um, Mr. Kapulka and, and our union leadership, um, what they've done over the last couple of months in negotiations and getting to this point has been incredible. I've been so impressed, and, and again, I thank our staffs and, and all of our employees for, uh, kind of coming together and, and, and getting that done. Um, I want to thank Ms. Brola and Ms. Nathan for all their time and energy that's been put into, uh, the committee work to get us to this point. Um, I want to talk about our C T career tech students that have earned over five hundred and twenty industry state-approved, uh, credentials during this last school year. It's incredible. Um, also want to talk about how, uh, our Communications Department worked with Eastern, so next year we're gonna be able to livestream our graduation, um, across the board. We met with the United Way, uh, led by Mr. Bibby and Ms. Mitter, uh, to bring community schools both to Wayne Memorial and Taff for next fall, which I'm excited because of the resources that come with it. Uh, Amy Bidney was able to secure a grant for a little over thirteen thousand dollars to develop a Great Lakes-based science, technology, engineering, and math educational program for next fall, and with the help of, uh, Ms. Nathan, too. Um, I just want to thank everybody, uh, in our community. A-again, it's been a tough couple of years, but people coming together, working together have really made a difference, and, and I know it hasn't been easy. At times, it's been very difficult. Um, I'm glad that we were able to reintroduce some of our important traditions, uh, that create meaningful experience for our kids, uh, like graduation and, and some of the, uh, other events that we ran this spring. We've had many challenges, but a-again, we show here in Wayne Westland, we have what it takes to tackle tough issues head-on for our family and kids. Um, the dedication, leadership, and service that, uh, I see day in and day out continues to keep our community at the heart of Wayne Westland Community Schools. Um, so I just want to say thank you to, uh, our staff because, again, they make it go. They're our heartbeat, a- and they do what's best for our kids, and, and that's why we're in business, and that's why we're here is for our students, so I'm grateful for that. I'll turn it over.
Thank you, Dr. Dignan. This portion of the meeting, ladies and gentlemen, is, uh, available to citizens who wish to address the board on any item at all. Doesn't need to have appeared on the agenda. Does anyone wish to address the board? Ma'am, please. Introduce yourself, please.
My name is Anne Heinecke, and I am a proud parapro in the district. I was on the negotiating team, and I just want to say thank you very much. It was enjoyable. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am. Um, members of the Board of Education, Mr. Buckaloo?
Eat your heart out.
Make it easy on the rest of us.
That's okay, she can freestyle.
So I have my Stamperinius comments that I wrote down a couple of days ago. We, we just completed our week of, uh, graduation activities, and it's kind of a, a long week. But I think that the staff and, and the board probably enjoy that week almost as much as the kids do. So it was a, it was a great, great week of activities, honors, uh, alumni, uh, recognition, uh, and of course, the graduation ceremony, so. That's behind us, the summer is in front of us, and, uh, that's good. Also, I'd like to congratulate the Operations Department for winning the, the Meridian Award for the seventh time, I believe, in what, this last ten years? So that's, that's quite an achievement, but what didn't get said tonight is what you do with that thousand dollars. You're not sharing it with me, I know that. It goes to a scholarship each time you win it, doesn't it, to a career tech, uh, student moving on to further his edu, his or her education. So that's a great thing. Uh, it's an, it's an honor to you folks, uh, and it's a credit to you folks for what you do with that, that money. So, uh, we went through about twenty roll call votes tonight, and about half of those were to approve contracts. Uh, all of our contracts are approved, if I, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, we had one last month and the rest tonight. Uh, which means when we open the buildings in the fall, there will be none of the hassle that sometimes, uh, accompanies that opening. I've been associated with the district for a good many years, and I think this is the first time in all of those years that we're s, ready to go into the fall without a single labor dispute. Uh, and six minutes, six months before any of them have expired, so that's fantastic. To all of those who, who participated, whether they represented administration, whether they represented our employees, uh, my hat is off to you. You've done a great job, and, uh, the district benefits from that. So thank you very much for that. Um, congratulations, Dr. Dignan, on your highly effective evaluation today. You've done so much for us, you truly have. Uh, I have to say that that evaluation was expected, and it certainly was deserved, and to say more than that, beyond, thank you very much for all that you do, or just, well, I don't know what else to say. Thank you very much. Um, yeah, that pretty much takes care of it for me.
What do you think, Ms. May?
I almost wanted to say what he said. Yeah, pretty much, that's what it is. You know, enjoyed the graduation. Congratulations to the class of twenty twenty-two. Um, each staff did a phenomenal job celebrating the students, and I know that it looks great to everyone sitting in the audience, but the work that happens behind the scenes to get there, and there are many, many, many people involved in that process, so thank you for that. Um, the other piece, again, is just, um, in regards to the contract negotiations and just getting to this point. I sit on contract negotiations, so thank you. I know how hard that is. I know, um, the difficult conversations that take place at the table, and so to get to this point and to have everyone in this room with smiles on their faces in regards to their contracts is an awesome, awesome feat, so thank you for that. And again, what Doc, uh, Mr. Buckaloo said to Dr. Dignan, thank you for all of your hard work. We come here each month, and you highlight your staff, you thank your staff, and you're so humble in all that takes place, and you're the person that is behind the scenes making all of this happen. And you're doing it for kids, so thank you for that. Now, was that better than he is?
That was, that was right on, that was right on the money, you know? Ms. Hines?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate Tony again for being a distinguished alumni. I remember my days at Wayne Memorial, that was twenty-five years ago, and you know, knowing Tony and his dedication to the district is amazing, to be here, to love the district, to have his family be in public service. I mean, we definitely appreciate you. Um, I definitely love the awards we get every year because one thing about Wayne Westland, we're the top of the notch. I say we're the best in the county in this area because we're the state of the art. We're innovative, we're a community, and we all take pride, you know, so I definitely appreciate your service. I appreciate Ms. Cleaves and all the hard work that she has done. They have us a balanced budget. Um, you, I mean, you're amazing. Mr. Toko, I love what you do with our kids and making sure that everything is running smoothly, and I also, um, Mr., um, my glasses, Mr. Kapula, I definitely appreciate what you have done with our staffing because it was a crisis at one point, you know, people were jumping chip. It was just horrendous, but thank you for coming in and stabilizing that because it's very important, you know, for our kids to make sure we have people that want to stick around. I'd like to congratulate the class of twenty twenty-two. Uh, me and Ms. Nathan were able to graduate our children with diplomas from Wayne Westland, and I don't want to cry, but it's the best feeling in the world to be a student at Wayne Memorial High School and to give your child a diploma. That's just amazing. Um, I also like to thank Dr. Dignan for being just an amazing superintendent. He's just the most dignity. And I have a couple of announcements. Um, um, I go to New Hope Baptist Church, and, um, one of the accountants, they have a awesome program. It's an accounting program for kids. It's free in the summer. It's called A-CAP, Accounting Career Awareness Program. It's one free week, and it's over at Wayne State University. Um, it starts Sunday, July seventeenth through Friday, July twenty-second. Um, current enrolled ninth graders to twelfth graders, must have a GPA of two point five, um, but it's amazing. This is a really nice, uh, organization that helps kids, you know, especially like going to college, you know, like in the summertime, and helping them advance their careers in, um, accounting. Uh, I also have another, um, flyer. They're having, uh, expungement and a community resource fair, and it's gonna be hosted by Attorney Dana Nesso and Mayor Patrick Wimberly and the Inkster Alumni Delta Sigma Theta. Um, not only are they gonna be doing expungements, it's gonna be a resource fair with health screening, dental screening, diabetes control, um, rental assistance, water assistance, tax assistance, and it's quite a few, um, organizations that are, you know, partner up. So I think this is good because, you know, like being a single mom and just dealing with inflation and just having to change jobs because I just didn't make enough. I had to write to CEO of my company and say, hey, dude, I only have thirty dollars in my gas, I mean, my bank, I can't get to work, like real talk, and I had to get a new job, like seriously, so this economy is hurting people, and I'm so glad that as a board, that we're able to give our employees a decent wage. You know what I'm saying? And still be able to balance our budget, so thank you guys for that. Um, and there is an event coming on, um, Wednesday at Tatten Park. This is gonna be so awesome. So they're having a cartoon called The Good Dinosaur, and, uh, Westland is reopening their Splash Village, which is free to all the kids. You can go, because it's gonna be hot. So you get the flat in the Splash Village, you get the movie, they're gonna have free popcorn, hot dogs, chips, all that good stuff. So a nice family event, and it'll be Wednesday at Tatten Park, uh, June fifteenth, and it'll be from five thirty to seven. And, um, I'm actually honored, uh, tomorrow, I'm gonna be a keynote speaker for the Inkster Chamber of Commerce. So, um, with my new job as Director of Special Projects, I'm just so excited to grow up in the community, go to Wayne Westland Schools, and come back home to where I grew up at, to help people to be entrepreneurs, tell them about the spirit, talk about education because they lost a lot of education, you know, when they dissolved the schools, but this is our opportunity at Wayne Westland to recruit and get more kids from all over, you know. I love what Dr. Dignan is doing, reaching out to other communities of South, uh, Homeowners Association. They were displeased at what was going on in the district, and now they want to come to Wayne Westland, so that's additional, maybe a hundred and fifty kids that helps us out, you know, in the classrooms, and we have opportunity here at Wayne Westland that other school districts don't have, you know, so this is a really good time, a good year, the synergy, and I'm just proud to be a Wayne Westlander, and that's all I got to say.
Thanks, Mel. Mr. Neal?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, my colleagues have already expressed everything that I might consider saying, so I have no further comment.
Thank you. Mr. Albrecht?
Well, thank you. Um, special thanks to Brady, Riley, Liliana, and Ilah for leading us in the pledge. Uh, especially Riley. Uh, we didn't give him a microphone, and he didn't need it. He did, he did a great job. Um, congratulations, Tony and Gino, and all of operations on your Meridian Award. It's well-deserved, I'm sure of that. Uh, thanks Kate and, uh, Ms. Nathan for your update on the progress toward adoption of a sex education curriculum for our children. I know how much work that is, um, and it, and, and it's widespread how much, uh, the community's been involved in that process, and I know how hard that might have been. I might've got a little emotional when we started to approve contracts. It was really hard in the old days. And all of these people had difficult decisions to make when it was tough. And I was on the other side and had to be the messenger, and that was brutally hard. So it, so pleasant, so great. Thank you for your work, Mike, and it really is gonna make a difference for our employees. Finally, I, I want to thank my colleagues, uh, for the work they did, uh, with the superintendent's evaluation. It was really enjoyable to meet periodically and talk about what our district was doing with those type of things that you might not always hear about every day, uh, when we're meeting at school board meetings and whatever. Um, we were able to ask questions, and Dr. Dignan was always ready to answer them. He clearly has everybody rowing in the same direction. You can see that happening. Student achievement has turned a corner and is getting better, uh, and, and I think that's really important. I want to congratulate you, Dr. Dignan. Uh, if we could give you more than a hundred points, I think we would have. There's so much that he's been able to bring to the district, um, and with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, John. You know, as, as I sit here and listen to everybody, and I think in, in this school district, every face I look at has done so much. We could spend hours and hours just thanking everybody. There, there's no exceptions to it. And Ms. May, uh, earlier in her comments mentioned people that are working behind the scenes and gave them credit, and, and she's one of them. I mean, Ms. May has a job doing this, and that she comes and she does it for us, and, uh, she does an excellent job. These finance meetings are not easy, and, uh, it's so appreciated. Also, Mr. Albrecht, uh, took what I believed to be a broken superintendent evaluation process that really, although it was required by law, it really did not give our superintendent any benefit. An employee, any employee, needs to know that they're headed in the right direction, and they need to have, uh, quantifiable, uh, uh, benchmarks that they're achieving. It's got to be worthwhile, and what Mr. Albrecht and his committee, and Mr. Neal and Ms. May put together for this evaluation process, uh, was an incredible success in my estimation.
put together for this evaluation process was an incredible success in my estimation. I don't know if we could have bought that kind of consultation, but we got it for like, what do you make, fifty cents a week now? It's very much appreciated, and I'd like to say to the employees of this school district, to be able to vote yes on contracts that we believe are fair, I mean, it's not what you deserve, it's what you're earning, and you deserve to earn the appropriate amount of money, and we think that we're closer to being there than we were, and to be able to do it was, and we owe it to the citizens of this community, is who we owe it to. You know, it's not the board deciding to do it, the citizens gave us the money with which to purchase these things, so it is the citizens, the taxpayer, who really deserve to be thanked for this. We so appreciate that we're in a position to where our employees can work hard and focus on their job and know that they're earning a respectable wage for it, so. Mr. Kapulka, I don't like to single people out, because everybody does so much, but for you to come in and hit the ground with all of those units, we had no reason to expect that that was going to happen, and we certainly are grateful to both sides of the bargaining table for the professional way that everybody managed this process, it was remarkable. And with respect to our Dr. Dignan, I think he received the evaluation that he deserves, less five points. We couldn't expect anybody to come in and do the job he's doing, and we all know it, we all hear it in the district, you don't have to be told by someone, you know it. We appreciate it, thank you, sir, on behalf of the community, thank you for everything you're putting in place, I know it's going to pay for years and years to come, and we so appreciate it. Thank you, everyone. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Albrecht? And Ms. Heinz?
Support.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no.